Brian. Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation by Dr. Bill Johnson with Dawson Memorial, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. We pray. "Father, I'm just so grateful for this council, for our mayor, for these who serve within our city, for the work they do. I pray your blessings upon their gathering this evening. We pray that you be with our national leaders in times of tension. We pray that you be with our state tomorrow as we vote and as we express our opinions at the polls. We thank you especially now for our schools and our teachers, our students, as they are beginning a new school year, and we pray your blessings upon them. Thank you for the good work that they do. Bless this gathering. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Dr. Johnson, thank you very much, sir. Is this on? Good. All right, if you will call, roll Ms. Salter, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Ms. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here. And we have a quorum. We'll begin with the reading of the minutes from the July 10th, 2017 meeting. Chair would welcome a motion to dispense with said reading and approval of these minutes.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is passed. End the reading of the July 24th, 2017 minutes which were sent to you. We would again welcome a motion for dispensing with those readings and approval.
Summons.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. Gualtney. If there is no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous as well. Okay, do we have board vacancies?
We do. We have a few.
Go, Ms. Smith.
So I'm running.
We're going to put you in charge of that. Go.
Great.
You're welcome.
So we need to open one seat on the industrial development board, and that is not a ward-specific position. That is a at-large seat.
Okay.
And then two on the commercial development authority. And that as well is, those are at-large, not ward-specific. So I guess we need to open them for a period of two weeks. So with people, applicants due by?
4:30.
Yeah, 4:30 on the 28th.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, and so that is done. All right. Hold on one second. All right, we have a consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from?
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrus. Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that is unanimous. And Mr. Jones has joined us, so...
I don't know.
All right, we'll move on to old business. 120517, public hearing set for November 13th, 2017, at 6:00 PM for consideration of petition of annexation for the property located at 1400 Shades Crest Road, requested by Melody Kane, Jolene Mills, and our city clerk. And we will carry that over until November 13th.
Mr. Limbaugh, can I interrupt for a second? You did the consent agenda, but did y'all actually approve the agenda?
Yes.
We didn't have any changes, though. Did y'all do that, or I just missed it?
No, we didn't. We approved it.
You did?
Didn't we?
No, she means the?
The actual agenda.
The actual agenda.
We did the consent agenda, but...
I'm sorry, we did not. We did not do the entire agenda.
Okay.
We need a motion for approval of the entire agenda.
Summons.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. Any further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much, Ms. Salter, for keeping me straight. So, 190617, request to work in the public right-of-way for setting two polls from Richard Pryor, Mobile Light, Greg Cobb, and the Building, Engineering, and Zoning Department. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues.
Yes, we had last Monday, Special Issues, and we heard Rick Pryor from the Dolly, and after his presentation, Councilor Andrus made a motion to recommend the approval of the two polls. Mr. Higginbotham seconded that motion, and it was approved five to zero coming to the council.
All right, so we have a motion and a second from Special Issues. Do we have any other questions or comments on that? If we don't, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And that is approved unanimously, and that would be Resolution 17121. All right, 070717, request for consideration of an ABCO2O retail restaurant liquor license for Bartico Homewood LLC located 1107 Oxmore Road, requested by Melody Salter and our city clerk. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. McCluskey?
Yes. Counselor Wyatt, after receiving letters of no objection from the police department, and moved to recommend having no objections to the issuance of the license pending no objections from the fire department for tonight, Counselor Wolverton seconded the motion. The motion carried by a vote of five to zero. And I will say that as of now, the fire department has cleared them as well, so I would make that motion as to us having no objection to the issuance of the license.
Good. So we have the motion from Public Safety. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved unanimously. And we will move on to 120717, request to accept dedication of road at Edgewood Place, requested by Eric Rogers and Vanessa McGrath. We'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we heard from the developers again last Monday night, and Mr. McCluskey made a motion to recommend approving the city taking the dedication of the road, and Mr. Higginbotham seconded it with a vote five to zero to approve that dedication.
All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments on this particular item?
Jesus.
If there is not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Somebody notarized?
Yeah.
We don't have the offer of dedication. She's just handing me something that's not notarized.
Okay.
I don't have any problems with it, but it's not the way to do business here.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Well, what we're...
Then we can't do it.
Okay. Could we, could we vote on it subject to the notarization?
Sure. You can do whatever you like.
That's what we'll do. That's all in favors...
So we need to amend?
Yes.
The motion?
Well, it's coming from your committee, so...
Okay, then I would amend the Special Issues motion to include that we will approve the dedication pending the notarization of the paperwork.
Okay.
And I will second that.
Thank you.
As I understood, the committee, it's not to be approved until the construction of the improvements.
Well, that's true. Yes, right, because they're not going to officially turn it over to us until the...
Okay, so whatever we do tonight won't be effective until after the improvements, am I?
Right.
Is what I understood from the committee.
No, that's exactly right.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Kendrick, do you need to review this prior?
No, it's a standard form of subdivision regulations. But the bottom line is that we talked about this Friday. I talked to Mr. Rogers as we came in. We didn't have it. It's just, it's not the way I prefer to be able to review documents. I've been ambushed before here by other lawyers, not by... And I think the lawyers understand what I'm talking about.
Talk bad about lawyers.
Some of my best friends and worst enemies.
Can I apologize, sir?
We understand. So, is there any questions of Ms. McGrath, other than just procedurally going forward?
Mr. McCluskey, did you make the second?
Yes, ma'am.
He did.
Okay, so with the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Therefore, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. And we will move on.
It's a resolution, Mr....
Sir?
That is a resolution.
122, 17122, correct. All right, 140717, request for consideration to amend the fiscal year 1617 budgets, requested by Berkeley Squires, Chief Tim Rawls, Chief John Bresnan, and Melody Salter, our finance director. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on August 7th, and for this particular item voted five to zero to approve the amendments as presented.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is 17123, which is approved. 150717, request for consideration to deposit public investment funds with Iberia Bank, requested by Mayor McBrer, Melody Salter, our finance director, and city clerk. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Again, the Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend said action.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 17124. We'll move on to 160717, request for consideration to increase the time limit for parking at 18th Street to three hours from two hours, requested by both Jennifer Andrus and Andy Gualtney. We'll start with a report from PND.
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted four to zero to approve increasing parking time limit from two to three hours in the downtown area. And I think we were going to get a, I think Mr. Kendrick had requested a tighter description of the area we were talking about during the committee.
What I did is looked at the ordinance, Mr. Thames, and it defines it, and we amended that based on the current ordinance, about change it from two hours to three hours.
Okay.
That's 18th Street, right? That's 18th Street.
Right. Mr. Kendrick, first reading?
Yes, so it's an ordinance to amend Section B entitled restricted parking of Section 19-21.1 entitled no parking of specific streets or portions of streets of Article 2 entitled stopping, standing, and parking of Chapter 19 entitled traffic of the code of ordinances. Whereas, Section 19-21.1 is amended as follows. It's only changed as simply as on 28th Avenue, excuse me, on 18th Street, between the intersection of 18th Street with Oxmore Road and 18th Street with 28th Avenue within the city limits, no parking in excess of three hours between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday of each week. And on 29th Avenue along, excuse me, along the public right-of-way portion of the north side between intersection 29th Avenue and 18th Street, and the north side of 29th Avenue and 19th Street in excess of three hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Saturday of each week. Otherwise, the provisions of 1921.1 are the same.
All right. Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Ms. Smith. And we'll begin with a roll call. Ms. Salter?
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So this will be Ordinance 2665. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Thames, second for Mr. Gualtney. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So 2665 is approved unanimously. All right, we'll move on to 170717, request for consideration to participate in the Jefferson County Spotlight in the October issue of the Alabama Magazine, requested by Barry Smith, Hal Kane with Alabama Magazine. We'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted five to zero to approve this, approval of the funding for the 1718 budget from line item 01-11-570500 advertising, five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That's our motion, and if there are no other comments, the chair would welcome...
How much is, how much is that?
I'm sorry, go.
It's 2498?
Yeah, it's right under 2500.
And that's consistent, yeah. It's actually less than what we paid last night. Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Good. No problem. All right, any other questions? If there are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So this is Resolution 17125, and it passes.
Ms. Smith, could you verify that for the resolution? And did you say that was 2,498?
2,498, yes.
2,498?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, 180717, request to add 800 square foot minimum back to Section A of NPD. Andy Gualtney and Britt Thames. This has also been referred to Planning Commission at 72417, council meeting, so therefore we will ask for a report from PND. Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir. The committee met, and it was reported the Planning Commission approved unanimously. The committee voted four to zero, recommend adding the 800-foot minimum.
All right, so we will set a public hearing for September 11th, 2017, at 6:00 PM for this item, and carry it over. 190717, request to add a street light to an existing pole on the street across from the Lee Center, requested by Andy Gualtney and Britt Thames. We'll start with a motion from Finance. Mr. Jones, or a report from Finance, I'm sorry.
Sure. Yes, sir. The Finance Committee voted five to zero to approve this. It would be $146.28 from the seven cent gas tax. And this was contingent on Public Safety approving this, which I believe they did.
And I can speak to that. Public Safety did approve it by a vote of five to zero with Counselor Thames making the motion and Counselor Wolverton seconding.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion from Finance and a second motion, I would say, from Public Safety. So therefore, if there are any questions, assuming there are none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that is Resolution 17126. All right, 200717, public hearing set for tonight at 6:00 PM for consideration of fence variance at 2920 Leland Drive, requested by Jacob Schuler, Vanessa McGrath, and our BEZ department. We'll start with a report from Special Issues.
Yes, the committee met last week, and Ms. Andrus made a motion to send this item out to the full council tonight pending the public hearing. That motion was seconded by Mr. Gualtney, and the committee voted five to zero to do just that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we will start by opening the public hearing. Do we have anyone to make any comments on this particular item?
After the committee meeting last week, I asked the applicant to send us a drawing that showed exactly where the fence was going to go, and he sent the attached drawing that should be in front of you. So he's showing 29 feet going down the driveway and then 55 feet going across. What that came from, where that line is, is we had him and Mr. Cobb go out today and make sure that's exactly where the property line is, or approximately where the property line is, as close as we can get it. So...
Thank you. I would point out that Ms. McGrath sent all of us an email earlier today to...
As soon as I got it.
Except me.
Yeah.
You're not part of my city. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Well, most of us.
I didn't mean it.
Here it is.
I have a question.
There you go.
Is this the one that Mr. Gualtney drew?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, here's the...
I remember. You had the best drawing of all.
Yeah. Here's the new.
All right, is, are there any questions of Ms. McGrath?
The yard, pictures of the yard.
If, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak to this item?
[inaudible]
As the cliche goes, going once, going twice. And we will close this public hearing. Now, comments from the council. Go.
I'll start. I did speak to a number of our neighbors, one the property adjacent and the property across the street, and they were opposed to the fence going in. Just wanted to add that for the record.
Opposed. Could you give us a number, Mr. Gualtney? I mean...
Two, the ones that I spoke to.
Two or...
I wasn't able to catch everybody, all of the adjacent neighbors.
What's their opposition?
The aesthetics, what it does to the corner, kind of, it's an odd piece of land, being the triangle there. You know, they were concerned about a sight line, but I think it is going to be a picket fence. I did convey that concern or that issue. But primarily, it's just the aesthetics of the fence and, you know, that it's, it kind of juts out into the neighbor's property a little bit as well.
Is the existing fence painted? I don't remember.
The fence along the backside? I don't think so. I think it's just wood.
Do they have small children? Is that why they're trying to fence this area in?
The home is for sale.
Yeah, it's for sale.
This is...
I was told that the people that own the house do not live in the state anymore. They are away for a new job.
Oh.
I think they're putting it there to...
Oh.
Right, the request is coming from the real estate agent?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Not the actual property owner?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That does change everything.
I think that, for me...
I knew that the real estate agent...
I'm speaking out of turn. Well, we've closed the public hearing. Let me ask this. Is there a motion that anyone would like to make?
It needs to be a positive motion.
Look to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Thames, second from?
Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wyatt. Then at this point, what we would do is hold a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And that, that nay is unanimous, and that is handled. So, we'll move on to 210717, public hearing set for tonight at 6:00 PM to consider declaring the property located at 1500 Wellington Road a public nuisance due to violations of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. Scott Cook, our code enforcement with the police department. Mr. Cook, could you give us a report, please?
Yes. What we're looking at tonight is only the excessive growth, but at the time, when I was up there, we had three violations: excessive growth, open storage, and abandoned vehicles. The property owner, Robert Rapierre, has taken care of the excessive growth. He has removed the litter, the open storage, all the boxes you see in the picture. He has removed those and a lot of other items scattered about the yard. And he has taken the abandoned vehicle out of the yard somewhere else. So it's disappeared. So I'm good with it. Everything's, everything's looking good up there.
So therefore, your recommendation would be?
To drop.
To drop?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Wright. Was that correct?
To drop, yes.
Yes. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is dropped. Okay. Next item is 220717, public hearing set for tonight. Wait a second. Did we have the, did we have the public hearing on the, well, we have to have the public hearing, right? Mr. Kendrick? Yes, sir. So, public hearing is open. Anyone want to speak to 210717? If they don't, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. 220717, public hearing set for August 14th at 6:00 PM to consider declaring the property located at 1620 26th Avenue South a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. Mr. Cook, go.
Yes, the owner is Rosalva Mollin at 1750 Valley Avenue. Notices were sent out on July 1st about excessive growth. And sorry, I don't have a before picture because it was, it's quite impressive. She has completely cleaned up the yard, front and back, and the tree that had fallen down from a previous storm is all being cleaned up and ready for the city to pick up. So...
Great. All right. Well, let us open this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? There being none, I assume we will close this public hearing. What would be your recommendation, Mr.?
It's a drop.
Okay.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCluskey.
Oh, question.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Just as we're talking about these, I think back to a lot of the properties that have been continually cited, and we have to, I mean, I'm happy that they're taking care of this, but it's taking a lot of resources from the city. Maybe at some point, we look at repeat violators and finding some way to, I don't know, there'd be some...
I appreciate that, because I get tired of playing their secretary, telling them your grass has grown up, over and over and over again.
I don't know what the answer is, but I just want everyone to think maybe of a, some type of solution so that we don't continually have the same violators and there's no ramification. I don't know, Mr. Kendrick, if you have any ideas, but maybe we'll...
Yes, sir. You'd have to file a suit for a nuisance based on repeated violation of certificated.
Are we keeping records on, how many, are we keeping records as people?
I don't...
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
So, so there's no way really to change the ordinance or to increase the fines for repeat?
You can certainly increase the fine.
Well, that's...
But we don't, this is not a criminal citation. This is civil, where we just could be a birth of cleanup plus interest in administrative affairs.
But we could...
You could cite them civilly if you could prove that it's a nuisance. Excuse me, criminal.
Well, there's something, less than 20 of these that we've seen multiple times. Would that be accurate?
You can't anticipate a nuisance if once it's activated, it's going to occur again.
But can a UNTC be written immediately once a nuisance is?
Sure.
Okay.
We can discuss that.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Sure.
But you got to find that owner to do that.
That is a criminal violation.
Yes, sir.
Citation. Sue them civilly or cite them criminally. That's the two options we have for enforcing of all of our ordinance.
But some of these are absentee owners and...
Which makes it more difficult.
It does.
But if it comes this far, and, but then we drop it so that we don't make a, we don't move on it, but yet we've gone, you know, Mr. Cook's gone out there, you know, they haven't paid us any money to reimburse us for any of his time. I mean, we haven't fined them because we're dropping it now.
Well, I think that's a strong argument for considering a fine increase.
Yeah, maybe we can look at that, yeah.
Would that be something that...
These properties that, like this one.
Right.
This guy didn't spend all this time dealing with it, but the guy did.
Yeah. I mean, I like the end result, looking for some other type of remedy to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, I think there's a way to do that.
There's no way to anticipate future conduct from a legal standpoint. It has to occur for you to be right for there to be a remedy. Or you could, again, you could swear out a warning against the company. They go to the municipal court, they unbook $500 for violation, they terminate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to 230717.
We had the, we had the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did not approve the drop. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have the motion. All in favor of the drop, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous and done. 230717, thank you. Public Safety, keep me straight, Mr. Jones.
Oh, no.
No, appreciate it. Public Safety set for August 14th tonight to consider declaring property located at 1632 25th Terrace South a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750, excessive growth. Mr. Cook?
Yes, this property is owned by Margie Ingram at 513 Old English Lane in Birmingham. Notices were mailed out, and property was posted on July 1st. The owner received the notices, and someone did come over there, as you can see in the picture, did mow or take care of about the first two-thirds of the vacant lot. It appears at one time, maybe there was a house there. So what hasn't been done is what I would think would be the backyard if there was a house there. So it has not been completely done. I have had no correspondence, no phone calls or anything from the property owner asking for more time, or am I in compliance for more time, or am I in compliance or anything? So, so, right now, my feeling is it's not, not to our satisfaction. It's still an issue.
All right, I understand, thank you. We will open the public hearing, and other than Mr. Cook being up here, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this particular item? Okay, there being none, we will close the public hearing, and the chair would welcome a motion and a second from the council.
So, who?
What, what is your motion?
Oh, to declare public nuisance, I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Wright. Any further questions of Mr. Cook? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous, and that is Resolution 17-126, 127. Does that sound right, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 17-127, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 2507-17, request for consideration of presentation by Daniels Companies, a report from P and D.
Yes, sir. The committee met and listened to a presentation from Mr. Neal and Mr. Warran at Daniel Communities. Mr. Jones made the motion, and Mr. Wyatt seconded to send the proposal to finance.
All right, so we will refer this to finance, Mr. Jones, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, committee referral agenda, chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, there we go. We'll move on to other new business. 0408-17, requests set a public hearing and a referral to the special issues committee for consideration of a front yard wall variance at 120 West Glenwood Drive, requested by Megan McGarvey and Vanessa McGrath, our BEZ department. We'll set that hearing for August 28th, 2017. 0508-17, request to set a public hearing and referral to the special issues committee for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at number one, Independence Drive, Kim Dawson, Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. This is special issues as well, and we will set a public hearing for August 28th, 2017 also there. All right, 0608-17, request to set a public hearing and referral to planning and development for consideration of the zoning application of Homewood Place LLC to rezone 2713, 2725, 2727, 2739, and 2717, 18th Street South, and 2728, Mamie L. Foster, from C4, which is Central Business District, to C4B, which is High Rise Office and Commercial District, to MDX, I mean MXD, which is Mixed Use District, for the purpose of permitting the construction of a joint hotel and retail development. As a note, you'll see that the planning commission in their August 1st meeting resulted in a favorable recommendation of a vote of 501, requested by Vanessa McGrath. We will set that public hearing for September the 11th, 2017. Is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. The next item is assumed in that same publication.
Yeah, we, we determined that the next item is, 0708-17 is actually included in with 0608-17, so we will move on from that. 0808-17, I request set a public hearing and referral to the planning and development for the consideration of a petition of annexation for the property located at 402 Cambo Lane, requested by William Schultz and our city clerk. How soon could we set that one?
Mr. Limbaugh, that doesn't require a public hearing, and the address is wrong. 402 Cambo Lane is...
It is Wellington.
Well, why don't we do this?
You can adopt, you can seek fit, I would refer that to committee to consider the annexation, but you don't, you're not required to have a public hearing because it is contiguous and surrounded by the city of London. But we don't have the legal description, we don't have all the things that we have to have to adopt it, so I recommend you refer to the committee for them to consider.
Okay. Who am I referring that to, special issues?
It's the planning and development.
P and D, okay.
It's already on there.
It's already been referred.
It's already on there. We, we had a referral and set a public hearing, so we're just dropping the public hearing.
There's no notice needed for a public hearing unless you want to have...
No problem, thank you, we won't do that. 1008-17, request to consider bid results.
You could drop it, 0808-17.
Why don't, the chair would welcome a motion for...
Well, we gotta, we have the same number, though, in many referral to go to the committee, so we can't drop it. We're just not going to have that. We won't keep the item number because it's from a referral.
Yeah, it's the same number, yeah, it's the same number as the referral.
We're going to move on.
Okay.
Okay, 1008-17, request to consider bid results from New Public Safety Center Demo Bid Package, requested by Chief Tim Rawls and John Hanson with BL Harbor. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Mr. Limbaugh, we may need a report from Harbor.
Is there a report from finance on this, Mr. Jones?
No, it is a report from Harbor.
No, sir.
Harbor is here to report on that because it did not go to finance yet. They needed us to move before it went to finance.
Okay. Who do we have here from Harbor?
The resolution I sent you is that they want to reject all the bids and rebid it because they, and all the places we've been, there's a resolution, probably not necessarily just documents that's being rejected and rebid, I think.
Well, why don't you bring us up today?
I'm not trying to shortcut you, I'm just trying to plan the resolutions.
Yes, sir, we had a...
You are...
John Hanson with BL Harbor.
Thank you, John.
And we had, had a public bid on July 27th, and since then, there's been some scope change, and the building could be relocated, and it's going to change the actual scope of the grading package that's within this demo package, which will reduce the cost of the, of the bid. So, we were proposing to throw it out and rebid and re-advertise once that's been finalized.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So, again, procedurally, Mr. Kendrick, do we pass...
This is a resolution I've provided to you that essentially rejects the current bids and authorizes them to rebid.
All right, good. All right, so we have a resolution, chair would welcome a motion and a second?
I'd move for that.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Higginbotham. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and that is Resolution 17-128. Okay. 1108-17, request to place a lien for cost of abatement for property declared a public nuisance at 2831 16th Place South, requested by Melody Salter, the city clerk. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Ms. Smith. If, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? That is Resolution 17-129. Okay, 1208-17, request to place a lien for cost of abatement for property declared a public nuisance at 2827 16th Place South, again, requested by Melody Salter, and chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is 17-130. 1308-17, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 24th, 2017, through August 13th, 2017. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Smith reviewed the voucher, so I appreciate that.
Um, yes.
I bet she did, it was a big grin.
Um, I went through the vouchers and had just a few questions, and Melody, of course, answered those right away, and I am, would move to pay our invoices.
Right, so we have a motion for Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. Any questions on these? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 17-131. And that concludes our agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing denied, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Unless y'all speak here.
Save it for the budget presentation, ma'am.
On second thought, we're perfectly happy with you passing. Mr. Gualtney?
It's just good to see everybody back in council, and also see all of our neighbors back in their homes and strolling to school in the morning, so...
I agree.
If we could just get some cool weather, it would be perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Thames?
I'll set P and D for 5:00. And probably need 30 minutes with the hotel on the agenda, it's probably going to be exciting. So, 5:00 to 5:30. Also, I wanted to thank Chief Ross. Couple of us talked to him about the parking ticket situation, and he really responded quickly, efficiently. I have gotten countless thank yous from merchants and a couple of upset merchants, but it was their employees that got tickets, and frankly, they deserved them, so...
I like that being on record, Mr. Thames.
Well, everybody's excited about going forward, and Andy and I did meet with the merchants in the monthly merchant meeting, and it was unanimous that this is what they wanted done. So, thank you to Chief Ross. Had a great time at the library block party this weekend. What a great cause, and it was a lot of fun. Everybody have a good week.
Thank you. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two, two quick items. First, did want to announce that we are, we being myself and Mr. Wolverton, are having our quarterly Ward 2 Town Hall meeting coming up this Thursday night at 6:30. It's going to be at the Homewood Church of Christ this time. We especially want to thank Reverend Walters and his congregation for hosting us. That's always a huge assistance to us to give us a location to meet, invite people to come out, and it's a pretty casual sort of affair. I, I tend to bring cookies because I figure people feel a lot better when they eat cookies, so... I know I do, obviously. So, any of, um, want to welcome anybody out who wants to come to that. Secondly, I just wanted to note that tomorrow is the primary day for the US Senate race, and I would encourage people to research the candidates and, and go out and vote their conscience tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey?
I do not have to set public safety.
We know.
I'm going to repeat this. I want to repeat this, I do not have to set public safety. It's fantastic. Y'all have a great week.
Mr. Jones?
I have a lot of people to thank. I, I'm sorry, I've, I've been out. I did, I did go to Cuba. That was incredible trip, but thank you for, Mrs. Smith, for kind of holding down finance and continuing with the vouchers this quarter. And thank you, Mr. McCluskey, for keeping Ward 3 operational and moving. We, we had a meeting at 5:00 where my, my 16-year-old was supposed to meet me right after the meeting, and I had to go find him, so I apologize for being late. But in any event, I appreciate, yeah, it's good to be back, like, like you said, Mr. Gualtney, it's good, good to be back. And I guess finance, can we have 5:30? That's when yours is over, Mr. Thames? Okay. So, finance, 5:30, we need probably about 30 minutes, and I'm looking forward to working within the budget. I know they're, they're working, having daily meetings, and Ms. Melody is not doing anything for the next couple of weeks, probably.
Going forward, every day.
She off limits, and I'm here.
Yes, and so, and it has been an emotional week or so for me because I dropped off Emma Grace on Friday at, at Alabama, so that's just, you know, just a bittersweet time, but I'm, I'm proud of her, and so, that's just a lot of things going on, but looking forward to the, the coming weeks. Thank you.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Ms. Smith?
I'm going to set special issues for 6:00, and I'm going to go ahead and take 30 minutes, just, sorry, Peter, just in case. Yeah, just in case. And in honor of Vance Moody, now that I'm a senior football mom, I'm going to, from now on, bore y'all with football stuff. So, Jersey night is this Thursday night, I mean, this Friday night at Waldrop. So, it's, sorry, it's on.
Okay.
It's on. And that's not just for the high school players, that's for the middle school players and all of the rec league football players, so everybody gets their, their jerseys and gets to run out on the field. So, that's Friday night at 6:00. And then, the first varsity football game is against Pelham, and they're going to do it at Sanford Stadium again this year. We did it last year for the first time, and that is on 8/24, so the next Friday night, at 7:00. And it's really cool because the band is going to walk across the street, across the lake shore, over to the stadium, and it's, it's going to be a big time. We're the visiting team, but still. So, go Patriots, and I'm going to try to survive senior year without having a nervous breakdown.
Good.
That's it.
Mr. Wright?
I thought Jersey night was at 5:00, not 6:00.
Oh, well, it had 6:00 on our schedule.
Okay. It may, it may be the kids, the, the youth league start at 5:00.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, yeah. So, it starts at 5:00, and just so everyone knows, there will be food trucks out there and inflatables, and as long as it doesn't rain. So, come out and enjoy it. And then also, the Homewood Athletic Foundation is having the second annual Buddy Wade Memorial on September 29th, golf tournament at Oxmoor Valley. You can get more information on the website.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Andrus?
I would like to say a thank you to Mr. Kendrick for our seminar the other day. I appreciate the time, and so glad you guys were there. I thought it was a great way to spend, I'm not being facetious at all, I thought it was a great way to spend a Saturday. I learned a lot, and I appreciate it for everyone being there. Also, wanted to say I had a great time at the library event, that was great, and I thought they did an awesome turnout, and I wanted to thank Dr. Johnson. He mentioned three things that were, that have been on my heart, and one has been the tension in the country in the last few days. The other is schools starting and getting the kids back to school, and then the third is tomorrow, make sure to go vote in our special election for our senate seat.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
I will set Public Works for 6:30.
Correct.
6:30. And should be a, should be a quick meeting. I'm going to find out here in a little bit if it is or not, but should be a quick meeting. And I just wanted to let everyone know, I think several of you were there, but the update on the schools moving forward, on their development of their plans. We had a very interesting and enlightening, and I thought very informative, meeting and presentation from the demographer, and a lot of that information has been publicized in the media and elsewhere, and I think that was very helpful, you know, great information, I think, that by golly, we're going to be able to get from that study as well. And I think that's going to help immensely with the schools in defining the scope of what, what they want to do with the funds allocated to them, so I look forward to that.